Common driveway off Florence Road from eight twenty-six, two thousand and one. As advertised.
It's not, it wasn't advertised as an administrative amendment, basically. Just to extend the time in which you need to substantially start a project. So what's happened is that this project was approved going back to two thousand and seven. It was a common driveway and I did bring tiny copies if you want to just refresh your memory. It's kind of near the intersection of Old Wilson Road and Florence Road. But so, the way the zoning has always been interpreted is that comment, that driveways that line up exactly across from streets don't need to meet the fifty-foot offset requirement. And in this case, Ned, so the applicant is here tonight.
We got two different ones.
Yeah, that's okay. He's just showing you the layout. It's just to remember this project and if you're up there, it's right here.
Oh, okay.
So, basically, the applicant was ready to move forward on construction and Ned Huntley reviewed it and is holding fast to the zoning ordinance. He says you have to be fifty, the driveway has to be fifty feet offset from an intersecting curb line of a street. And as you can see here, this is an Autumn Drive. It's directly lined up. When it came through for site plan approval, D W reviewed it, everybody reviewed it. And it's common practice that we allow driveways to be, that's a safe place, to put them right across from streets, but if they're not, then they have to be at least fifty feet off. In this case, I mean, Cole Morgan went through, it's right across from Village Hill Road, you've got Beaver Brook, which is not technically a street, is sort of an extension of Chestnut Street. So there's lots of examples of the city approving these, but Ned feels strongly that the zoning language has to reflect the practice. So he doesn't want to issue the driveway curb cut permit to build that until the zoning changes. So the applicant is sort of stuck in this middle place, so wanted to come back to get an extension of time to start the project. What you'll see coming out of City Council next week is a proposed zoning amendment that just merely states what the practice has been, is that if a driveway isn't lined up exactly across from the street, then we need to meet the standard. So we've already submitted that to City Council to be considered as an ordinance change and Ned is fine with that, but he just wants the language on the books before he puts it. So this request in front of you is just to allow an extension of time. If you remember, the police station came before you for the same thing and you have the jurisdiction to do that, so that's why it's here.
You guys all know where this is? Do you guys remember where this is? So you go out sixty-six and take a look at the light field on the left. And you can actually see, if you drive by it, you can see where in a little second it creased down where the road tend to be right across from off of it. Is there, do you want it delayed to a certain time? Are we saying six months or are we just saying it definitely?
Well, you know, the typical period is two years. You could either say just extend it two years. The expiration date was from the August twenty-six, two thousand and eleven, so in a few weeks. Or you could put a year on it, whatever you felt, or six months, but a year might be more, leave more flexibility since we're getting into, you know, depending on when Council finally adopts the ordinance, it might be past the plants, it may not be open. So you might do, I would suggest at least a year.
Any questions on this? Anyways, the public here to speak to this issue. Just introduce yourself.
Me? I'm John Ewing. Yeah, really don't have much to say on it. Would like a year as for the reasons that Carolyn stated. We said, I guess it may take as long as November to get the wording changed on it, so it's too late to do anything. So six months if we're, maybe no, we're here, so a year would be good.
Who's asking for a year? People for a year.
Looking for a year. That's it, that's all I have for requests.
Great, alright, thank you. Any other comments or questions? So this is going to go to the City Council, which means what Carolyn's going to come back to us?
Yeah, so we're having public hearing. Probably September eighth is sort of the target date. We've scheduled for joint public hearing on the King Street package. So we'll probably just put this on that same agenda. It's going to be a long wait.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a question. Is there another avenue to approach to get this done by the ZDA person?
It doesn't really qualify for me.
Probably how zoning things, kind of crazy times when something is there.
At least it'll be, at least it'll be very clear from now on. It's something, it's something we want to do, but I don't think the zoning was explicitly specified.
The zoning review commission will be taking care of it. Alright, I move we give him two years.
You want to give him two years or one year? He's only asking for one.
I don't know, give him two. Two would be better.
Five. No, not two.
Last second.
Alright, so, I mean, I'll accept an amendment if you want. Okay, well, let's go through this. Let's close the public hearing, then they can make the motion.
I'm moving. Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Hold on, it's.
Am I too late?
I do have one question. If this is approved, the extension, so I'm assuming I have to wait until the wording is changed officially by ZDA.
Well, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it's not a planning board issue, it's whether or not Ned would be willing to grant the permit.
Does he have the authority?
Yeah, he's the one who issues the curbs.
But all we're doing is extending it till we can work this issue out. So it's still up to, the same process will happen, Ned has to do it after the City Council votes. So we have motion in a second, close the public hearing. All in favor? Brandon, alright, Brandon, you want to make the motion?
I move we grant his request for extension of time, let's see, extension of time on a site plan approval for John Ewing coming, driveway off of Florence Road from eight twenty-six, page twenty-eleven until eight twenty-six, twenty thirteen.
Second. Any discussion on this one? We're going to do two years. All up there. Alright, so, thank you. Step one.
You're talking to me, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Alright, number two, vote on the MOU for PVPC plan update if finalized. Here, please, Ted.
I did, I did print out a couple of copies. If you want to go over, I can sort of give you a quick summary. Basically, PVPC does a regional plan for every, I don't know, I guess the last time you did it was, I guess it must have been five years, because the last time you did it was two thousand and seven, so if you want to look at this, I'll put one on the other side, two, two-sided. So, basically, what they ask, what they ask every time they do the plan is for the member communities, I think they're four, three, the executive official, either mayor's or the boards of select people, adopt, vote to enter this memorandum of agreement to adopt the plan, essentially, the regional plan. The thing that's slightly different about this plan, I mean, a lot of, there are a lot of issues that are very, or goals and objectives that are things that the city's already doing and is consistent with sustainability. The one big change in this plan is they put language and they've done analysis of communities in the valley based on a hope that this change in legislation will happen in Massachusetts, that there will be reform in land use regulations. So this is all predicated on this bill that's been worked on for years and years in Massachusetts to change the rules and regulations regarding zoning and subdivision. So, in some ways, it's a little bit of the cart before the horse, in other ways, it's maybe just really optimistic and hopeful that no changes whatsoever will happen in the legislature to, to adjust the proposed legislation as it stands, which is such sweeping language that I can't imagine, I mean, they don't need proven wrong, but I can't imagine it'll go through without any amendments. So it doesn't really have any bearing on Northampton except the analysis in there is that in some places we're not consistent with this proposed bill. And I think we're not consistent with it because we can't be, because there are things in there that are proposed that are illegal right now and it will only be legal if the legislation changes.
You got casinos in the roundhouse?
Yep.
Oh, now you're talking, yeah.
Well, you know, one of the things is making sure that open space residential development is required for any development of more than five lots. And that's illegal now. You can't put that on us, you can't put that restriction in your zoning. And so this plan says, you know, Northampton isn't quite consistent because it doesn't have those regulations.
Most of the stuff we do is cluster anyway, which has that requirement.
Right, but we can't require somebody to do a cluster if they can do A and R because under state law.
Oh, even the A and R would have to have.
Right, there was, right, that's what this would be proposing is any development of larger lots that is proposed to be more than five units has to be in an open space residential cluster type of arrangement. So, you know, I think.
Even like a subdivision of a district, we'd have to, what would you, what would be the difference?
Well, it's, subdivisions are probably different, but then as part of the subdivision, if you're doing more than five lots and it's a large lot, what they're, what they're classifying as large lot are forty thousand square foot lots.
Yep.
So if you've got five of those, you have to do it in a cluster and not do.
Wow, because that's.
So, is that the key change or are there other things as well as the open space?
Well, I'm going to say that, I mean, they packaged a whole section of the plan is based on meeting these goals, benchmarks, in this proposed legislation. So it's not just the open space residential, but there are other elements in there as well. And some of the things Northampton's already doing and others we're not because we can't because it's not legal. So I'm just pointing that out, but if, so if, for instance, a legislation passes, then this is great, it's forward thinking, it's been adopted by all these communities and great, we're good to go. If the legislation changes, you know, PVPC will probably be in the position of having to modify the plan, which doesn't really have any bearing on you all in terms of making the recommendation. You can still make the recommendation that the city enter into this MOA or MOU.
Is it on, I'm going to be Jennifer, this legislative session, what's going to happen this year?
It's in process, but it's been in process for a number of years, but it's actually a bill now. So it's been, there've been committees working on it for several years. It has a Senate bill number now, so it's, and it's been assigned to a subcommittee.
I can imagine there's going to be a lot of pushback on something like that.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of significant changes, but I don't know how much buy-in, you know, the committees, the committees have, have tried to get buy-in from a lot of, you know, the homeowners, the home builders association and other real estate interests. So there may, I don't know how much of a coalition there is around it, and that's really probably the key crucial, key point to getting it adopted.
Anybody have comments or questions on the MOU?
Do we actually have a copy of the amendment yet?
No. But basically, it's not the planning board that adopts it, it's really the mayor that has to sign it. So you all would be asked to, and in the back, the back page actually of that draft, I think the last page, it describes how PVPC goes about requesting agreements, I think it's one of the last couple of items. And, so it's really, they go to the executive officials of each community to sign the agreements, but to the extent that there are planning commissions or planning boards in each of those communities that make the recommendation, it's all the better.
Do you think this is going to cause a lot of change towards zoning?
Yes.
No?
Because we're already doing a lot of these things. There are some things, I think, no matter what, I think if the land use reform passes, it will give Northampton a lot of flexibility to do things that we've talked about wanting to do for a long time. So in that regard, it will enable the city to do the things. And then we would be consistent with the outlines that are identified in the plan. But it's, so I don't think it's contrary to anything the city would want to do or inconsistent with a sustainable Northampton.
Kathy?
Yeah, I was just wondering, so you're asking us to approve this as a proposal that we would get behind if the legislation goes through, is that?
Well, not if the legislation, this is PVPC's document. They're asking all the communities to adopt it as it is. So what they've asked us is to, and we would recommend that the city adopt it as the regional, as a member community of the regional planning agency.
Even so, there are certain things that are inconsistent with our current zoning ordinance.
Yeah, because they're inconsistent with everybody's zoning ordinance because they're not allowed.
So do we adopt it with, with a kind of a caveat that given the inconsistencies, we still support it as an idea or is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, and as you really, let me just see if I can find the language to show.
Well, but I know, it doesn't have to force us zoning, we're just adopting, it doesn't, we don't.
It's the, you're adopting it as a regional plan and what is the goals within the regional plan. So you can make the, you would make that recommendation to the mayor that you think this is a good planning document and is a good, has good regional goals. And they're just, I mean, they're very, most, all these goals, if you look at all the goals, they're certainly all consistent with sustainable requirement. I was really more pointing out the fact that they have this whole section on consistency with the Land Use Reform Partnership Act, and then what things would come into play if that act passes. And I think they're all good and valuable, it's just that they're, they're anticipating something that hasn't happened yet. So in essence, you'd be agreeing to the plan that would be anticipating that all these great things will.
Will it be up and running?
Yeah, exactly.
If that legislation goes through, everything will be in place to go.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any parts?
What about approval not required? Is there a chance of getting rid of that in part of this?
Um.
Seems to me I recall something about.
Well, this, it is, especially, there are probably two ways. One is the whole requirement for cluster, that you essentially get four A and R lots and that's it, you can't do ten, you know. But I have to, the latest version, I didn't brush up on the latest version and what it says about A and R, because I can quickly go through and figure it out. But yes, that was part of the discussion early on. Let me just see if I can find it in there.
What if there's a place in town that could do five A and Rs?
Pardon?
Is there a place in town right now where you could do five without having to put in a road or do a cluster in there? We have, what? An A and R means you've got the front edge, the roads there.
Yeah, and A and R essentially means that we have no control over it.
Right, it means all the.
It means everything, yeah. And it seemed to me that's something that no other state has.
Yeah, I mean, it says right here that basically you, it would replace, it would provide an option for towns and cities to replace A and R with a different category of subdivision. So instead of having subdivisions for creation of new roads, maybe there would be a difference of like a minor, they're calling it a minor subdivision, that would still require review, but it wouldn't be the, maybe it wouldn't be the same review as full-blown subdivision. So right now, you know, there's no review at all, there's no site plan, there's nothing. And this would suggest that you would have to come through for review.
And if I could find five A and R lots in a row, I could do two of them, and then I could do three of them, the ones that don't have all five at the same time.
Right.
I was going to say, so we're being asked to adopt a plan because we think it's a good regional plan, it's consistent with the overall sustainability plan, even though it's not consistent with current legislation. Does that imply that parts of the current sustainability plan aren't consistent with current legislation? So that if this plan is ultimately adopted, is it going to be different than the sustainability plan?
Well, no, I mean, there's certain, there are things that, the sustainability plan is so broad, there are things in the legislation, proposed legislation, that would allow us to do more with our sustainability plan than we couldn't do now in terms of implementation. So our plan is really just goals and policies, and that's what this is. It's just that there's another step that in this proposed land use reform, there's a process by which you submit, each town submits their plan to the regional agency and the regional agency evaluates the plan. Right now, we don't have to do that. Our plan is our plan. Nobody anywhere else says, oh, wait a second, you're not consistent with Amherst and all the other communities. So that would be different, but I wouldn't say that the proposed legislation would sort of make, invalidate our sustainability.
Andrew, was that a structure?
No, so it's just a structure.
So what you're saying, I mean, because I haven't read it, I'd say, is that in there there's a component that has to do with collaborating with the other communities in the valley?
More, right, but through the regional agencies, so through PVPC, right. And PVPC would be sort of the arbiter and look at all, yeah, all the plans, and then if you are consistent, it would enable you to have special status for either getting funding or doing other projects or getting preferred status.
For collaborating.
Yeah, potentially.
What's up?
I mean, it was a whole, it's a whole focus on creating partnerships with communities as opposed to each individual community going off on their own and doing their own thing.
It was interesting to look at some of the stats that are in there, you know. One was interesting is like the nine percent decrease in elementary school population. And the other was, we'd have a decreased population if it wasn't for immigration, which was also interesting.
Yeah.
But that was, in fact, we still have a decrease in population, even accounting the, the population area is going to, no matter what.
Are there any members of the PVPC who have not adopted this plan?
Well, you know, they just finished, this is sort of hot off the press, so it's all been distributed to all the communities now, so it's hard to know.
Or the last, when it was updated last time, four, five years ago, where there.
Yeah, I think there's a stat in here about that, actually. It said that three.
Yeah, something, is that what you saw?
Yeah, it didn't say which ones on. They were, three out of forty-three.
They were hoping, they didn't want a finger point because they wanted them to put some.
Right, right, exactly.
Although shaving sometimes works too.
It was also interesting, this is Northampton, the key threshold population.
Yeah, is that interesting?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's not something, I mean.
Some parts of this are interesting.
Yeah, it's a, I live in a town that people want to live in, but it's not.
Nope.
Where's that town, people kind of pull to live in?
It's all rich retirees.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting. Well, so, are you, we don't need to, you need to vote to accept this or no?
No, you want to, you want to make a recommendation to the mayor, basically. We recommend that the city adopt, or sign the memorandum.
And it doesn't obligate us, I mean, I guess I'm still curious about, I know the state law trumps our zoning, so say this bill passes, is it going to require an overhaul of zoning or just the zoning automatically that conflicts? Our zoning, any zoning we have that conflict with state law, it's just null and void. Or are we going to have?
Yeah, I mean, there's certain things, so there are vested rights issues and there are other things that we've sort of long held as being, you know, like grandfather and things like that might change, and so we might have to alter the way we operate. And we might have to make some adjustments to the zoning because some of the new rules might invalidate some of the things we've done based on the old rules.
This isn't a law or this is, so somebody's going to have to write something to put any of these into effect, so I doubt if they're going to just take this and translate it into a law.
Well, I'm thinking, so it's like two pieces though, it's like there's this, but there's this pending legislation, which this doesn't, isn't the same as. So, yeah, so I guess what my thought is, you know, we're, we're kind of saying, yeah, this is okay, but if it's six months or twelve months, wherever this bill gets passed, if it gets passed at all, we may.
Well, I think this is going to be adopted peacefully, it's going to be adopted peacefully, wouldn't it?
Well, I mean, and so here's what I think would happen, let's say the legislation passes and it's good to go, ready to follow. Let's like, let's say it dies a fiery death. Then, I mean, they could probably just go back and amend, easily amend the plan and say, well, we have to extract all this stuff about, you know, the land use reform act because it went down in flames.
Right, but this itself doesn't hold us to anything.
No, no.
That's some good, good stuff in it. The thing about the eight-year grandfather clause, they want to reduce it to four, that's a terrific idea. A lot of this stuff is just ridiculous.
Yeah, all the vested rights stuff is, yeah, part of the reform, proposed reform.
Okay. So I mean, I think we ought to say that we agree with the principle and what about that?
I'm recommending the mayor sign the MOU.
I'm ready to vote.
Isn't that what we're trying to?
Well, yeah, that's the, I mean, we could vote yes, we recommend it to the mayor, we could vote no, we don't recommend it as any, we could take no stance on whatsoever. So seems people are pretty much in favor of it, so should we, we need a motion, suppose we just have a motion.
I move that the, that the planning board recommended the mayor sign this, the MOU with regard to the contingency plan.
Second, can close this session? All in favor? Pardon? Talk about chickens.
Well.
So number three, discussion of sustainable Northampton implementation priorities, CRC items, chicken, home implementation, other plan, OPD items, cluster, map changes. We're going to change floors, I guess.
Yeah, that was sort of a note to me.
I thought we were going to rename it NOVO.
Flo- Flo- Flo-.
Flo-. Glenn, you want to do this in a particular order?
Well, let me just sort of eradicate all of this discussion as sort of to get you guys thinking about what your next, what your next priorities are. I mean, you got the report from zoning originals committee, there were, you know, two more fleshed out items than anything else, the chickens and the home business thing. And then there were a bunch of other things that they recommended, in particular around residential districts. All, I mean, those things need to be fleshed out more, and then you have sort of the work plan, that's all the items that potentially could, you could, you know, prioritize or reprioritize based on what you think are either low painting fruit or lowering fruit or important. And so it's really sort of, it's meant to be a discussion about what you guys think you want to tackle next after this, you know, we get through the series, we presented the whole institutional change thing at the last meeting and some other zoning that you asked staff to move forward on, but sort of this would be the next wave. What do you want to work on? Do you want to handle the central districts? Do you want to look at cluster in particular or business, chicken? I mean, I would say the chicken thing, although it's simple, there really hasn't been any vetting to the greater public. It's really only about chicken advocates who have said, yeah, we want twelve, sounds good, let's go. So, you know, I don't know how people feel about being surrounded by twelve chickens on all sides.
Well, we could, I mean, the thing about the, we could start with the chicken one, it is pretty simple.
Use it.
Well, well, it's simple in terms of the right, I think, it was a lot of discussion that went into it, but the thing that-
How was it identified as a priority?
Uh, at the first or second, very first or second meeting of the ZRC, Lily Lombard came, she was the urban agriculturalist, and it was, there was a lot of ideas thrown around, but one of the ones that had the most traction was chickens.
Tractability.
And that was with the board, and it was simple, you know, there were various ideas thrown around, such as, one of them I thought was interesting was being able to keep larger livestock, goats, piggy goats, other ones on your land, but then being able to walk to other parts of towns and they can raise kind of these moving or commuting animals. But the chicken one, it was, seemed like the simplest one, that most people would really do. Plus other towns around us, I think Amherst most recently had the, somebody else was the, was it East Hampton? There's a lot of towns around here that have adopted very similar ordinances to this, so that was one of the, but there was a lot of discussion about, one of the things we talked about a lot was, you know, one of the provisions E is onsite slaughtering is prohibited, but then there's also culling, I'm not sure of how we ever differentiate slaughter and culling, so if you somehow do have too many, or how do you cull them?
Lots of roosters and no hens.
Right, because what you do, what was interesting that I didn't realize is, is when you get chicks, when you order chicks, the, the gender of the chick is not known by the time you get them, so you can order a dozen chicks, and you can turn out to have six roosters and six hens, but the rule is, you only get twelve hens, so if you get six roosters, what do you do with them? So-
Do you mathematically eat them?
Eat them, but it's-
You can do it with cash.
You can do it with cash, so, but there was a lot of, there were very, in town there were lots of strong advocates in favor of, I think, the rule right now, Carolyn's right, it's blurry, even at three, so this is really just an increase between the nine.
Yeah, but, I mean, practical matters, people don't follow that rule. My neighbors, for example, did not follow that.
I can't hear you. What did you say?
It, it's not enforced, that I'm aware of.
Oh, well, that-
Or follow.
That could be, there's a lot of stuff.
Oh, it is.
Well, I think it becomes enforced when it causes an issue, so if you called Lily and said, hey, my neighbor got twelve chickens, Lily would have to enforce it, but, and that's where, so, and maybe that makes people far more compliant, they're much more aware that if they, they do do it wrong.
I think pretty much there's been a, people feel like three is too few, I don't think we've had the broader discussion to say twelve is perfect for everything.
That's how I was gonna ask, how we had, where did twelve come from?
Twelve was, twelve was too many.
Yeah, that seems like a lot to me.
It's like the X comes with twelve, so.
Oh, that's funny. Yesterday, we were, we were driving through Savoy or someplace up there, and there was a little sign that said, this is a right to farm community.
I saw that sign.
And it, you know, it made me think of this.
What does that mean?
What does it mean?
I think it's like Ash has so much.
I don't know what it means either, I didn't stop and ask, but I assume it means, maybe you can have twelve chickens.
And ducklings.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think the thing about this was, it, we talked about it for a long time in the ZRC, we took a long time hammering out what we thought were enforceable rules, I mean, at some point, one point the rules were, you had an informal word, health, if you had them, there was a lot of discussion about how far the runs could be when you rent property, so there was a lot of discussion back and forth on this.
Composting.
Composting, and so, I think, I mean, I can see a lot of the neighbors complaining.
But I think the issue is, if you wanna take it up, I would say, you know, that's fine, if you wanna take it up, but taking it up means that the board needs to do outreach, because that hasn't been had, that hasn't happened, it's only, there's only been outreach to the advocates.
Sure, and are they the ones that suggested twelve? Was that something under-
I wasn't, was it, was it the, was it-
Yeah, I mean, there was a whole, some people suggested fifteen, and, and they sort of came to twelve as the number, that, you know, three was definitely too few, but beyond the people who have a very strong interest, it hasn't, there's been this.
So outreach would involve open meetings?
Yeah, neighborhood meetings, or maybe a couple big public forums.
I'm just wondering, like, is there, is this how we wanna verify this? I mean, that's, this is a potential, a lot of work for someone, to, you know, have all these public meetings and forums, and to run them, get feedback.
Yeah, I mean, the ZRC did do it, it was, it was funny that we didn't, you know, I'm not sure how we didn't end up doing this with one of the many public forums we had over the two years, why the chickens didn't?
Because the chickens, they weren't right, they weren't ready to do, they answered along the number.
Yeah, but I guess that's a good question, I mean, we could, I mean, we haven't been overwhelmed with permits lately, we could have the public meeting here, and invite various groups to it here, so we can do it as part of a normal Thursday night, rather than having to say go for a civic center, or, you know, various places you met.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't mean you necessarily have to do a lot, I think you probably just wanna think about, you know, target key, people who can then spread the word that this forum is happening, get the newspaper, you know, before it become, before you introduce it as an ordinance.
Right.
But I think the number, the question for us will be, the number, noise, setbacks, runoff, disposal of the waste products that chickens create. Chicken poop, chicken poop, yeah.
No, it's additional chicks don't count toward the total, at what age does a chick become a chicken?
That's another good one.
I think it's six, I think it's six months.
It's only a flex in bills, so, but, well, the thing is, since you can't have roosters, since it's hens only, so you shouldn't be, this is not to create a farm, but, you know, the idea is hens are quiet, roosters are loud.
Do they know that?
The chickens?
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't say that they're totally quiet.
They all smell.
Yeah, I mean-
Odor is a major issue.
Well, the other thing we might wanna do, Carolyn, when we do this, is just compare what we have to what Amherst had, I mean, yeah, you don't have to go-
The ZRC, you, I need to, they compare, if other, if East Hampton, you know, has chicken pork and-
That, because that, that happened kind of after we got-
I think they, they maybe compared it to Greenfield or something, because I think Greenfield allows twelve or something like that.
Yeah.
They've looked at one or two other communities, and I can't remember, did Amherst do twelve? Did that-
I think Amherst did twelve.
Really?
I think East Hampton did twelve.
Twelve, twelve is a pretty common number.
But I don't know either, I think the twelve might be in certain districts, too, whereas this one is just sort of-
Citywide.
Citywide.
That's actually a good question, do we wanna have like the URA, B and C, it's a smaller number than we're all in other areas.
You started by saying this was gonna be easy.
Well, that's, it's short.
Short.
We don't get the home office, that's, I-
So central business, they could have outside their storefront, they could have some chicken, boy, and three ducks outside.
You guys should have known the ZRC.
And the bid's gonna clean up well.
Yeah, right.
That's right, that's why you have to-
That's where your bid dollars are gonna grow towards, picking up eggs and-
Right, no more Christmas lights. There, there could be a great anti-chicken outreach, you know, of people from the anti-chicken element.
Well, I'm sure-
A foul blowback.
A foul blowback.
It'd be like we're putting photovoltaics on a landfill or something.
Right.
But it is different, I mean, like, where we live, I, I mean, my neighbor's chickens were totally fine, but we're really close, you know, it's-
And in fact, the rules on this, I mean, was number C, poop shall be located within four feet from property boundaries, and no poop can be set closer than twenty, than twenty feet to an existing residential structure, not in a money parcel. My old house, you couldn't put a poop, there's no way you could put a poop in my old yard.
Oh, see, that's interesting, but I-
Because that means that the houses, because the houses aren't at least forty feet apart, you can't put a coop in.
I'm not good at spatial things, um, you tell me, you, you know.
I mean, if it's near, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, I-
So are you, are you thinking that they wouldn't be able to do it?
They would not.
Who would be?
My old neighbors who had three chickens, who had more than three chickens.
Oh.
Would they be able to do it on the railroad tracks?
Yeah.
Ouch.
That's how you, that's how you call them.
Yeah, well, so, that means that somebody that now legally has three chickens, might, might be illegal to have three chickens after this happens.
Yeah, that kinda sucks, I mean, I don't want that to happen.
Wouldn't be grandfather, is there a grandfather in closet?
And when if they, and if they die, do they, or do they, you know?
Replace them, same footprint.
This is, you just don't know.
This is worse than saying capons are allowed.
Yeah.
Cap, it's a capon.
Exactly, I had to Google it.
Exactly, it's a chicken, it's about this big.
No, it's a chicken, it's a male.
Gelled, gelled, yeah, it's a gelled male. Poet, so we call it poet.
Capon. Well, I want to say capon's old.
What's a poet then?
Small.
This is why we're not gonna be out of here by nine.
Oh, no, okay, we're gonna figure out what we're gonna do with the test.
Decide on maybe having an open forum on chickens in October.
So we have two meetings in September, we have the eighth and the twenty-second. The eighth is pretty busy because we have Kinston. Do we have any permits?
Yeah, we'll have, yeah, we have Kensington Estates continuing on the eighth.
Oh, and one by the old road, no? Are they coming back, have they, have you heard any indications that they're ready?
Oh, yeah, I think they're probably, I haven't seen plans, which is a little worrisome to me, but they are, I'm sure they're planning to come back.
We can do another field trip up there?
We should, certainly, yeah, probably.
Oh, I'd like that, I was never, I was not able to go.
I haven't.
So the second meeting in September?
Is the twenty-second, and then for October is the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh.
So we do thirteen, and Carolyn, I guess you and I could talk about how we're gonna get the word out, and anything else we have to do.
Was there any discussion of the fact that some people would be, like people in town would be excluded by these?
No, actually, it didn't, never came up.
Right, that's, that doesn't seem fair.
A poet is a young hen less than one year old.
Oh, thanks.
Really? So right now, so the difference is right now-
Where than I-
Yeah, you get, you get three by, you can get three chickens anywhere with no rules.
No, that's because they're pets, unless you get up to more than three, they're not pets.
Right, so maybe that's part of the answer, is that you at least keep the three with no distance restrictions.
And then greater than three, you cross the border.
Has this become a commercial thing, like people are selling eggs or selling meat, or is this just for family consumption?
It does rapidly.
It says household pets are personal use. It's like, it says household pets are personal use right there in the actual ordinance.
I don't think you should have more chickens in here.
People are gonna be giving away eggs all over town, they're probably gonna handle it.
Well, you don't have to have twelve, you can have twelve, of course, the team, the family I know that has eleven, it's two families, they keep them in one person's house, but it's two families, and they, they explode them, they give a lot away.
So they're actually violating them.
Uh, it's obvious.
Oh, what is there?
There's a lot of farm.
Uh, no one's.
I will.
Well, somebody should write a story about this, the agricultural answer, because that, you know, between now and October, something, because we could get, you know, get people informed about this issue.
See, I think that's, no, those are not the people we need to inform, the people we need to inform are people who want to come in and say, or, you know, I mean, you don't have to get the project of people.
No, but if people read it in the Gazette, and they'll think, oh my god.
But as anti-chicken persons, it would not be a, it would be a section.
Well, so, wanna do it for the eighth?
So October thirteenth?
October thirteenth.
October thirteenth, that is just the first public forum on chickens, is that what we're saying at our meeting?
Yeah, and then I guess you and I could talk about what we're gonna present, and then how we're gonna put it out, like, in fact, if we go to the old ZRC, we had three people on the ZRC who did outreach, and find out how they did it.
Wow. I think, yeah, I mean, their approach was to go to people who knew about chickens and-
Well, no, no, there was also, you know, we contacted more three, for civic, space aid.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to go to them, but we also have, I mean, that's what the city councils are for, and the civic association, so, you know, is that Republican?
So are we, from a board's perspective, are we saying that's our priority right now, between home business and chickens, that chickens are gonna take the lead, or does that mean, does it mean anything, or?
Well, you guys wanna do home business, then we can decide if we wanna do the thirteenth of October, because the home business one, the, the issue, there was, actually, we did a lot of outreach on home business, we brought it out, we had, there's two forms on it, we got some very negative feedback on it, very positive feedback on it.
This is the one where we were, they demanded to know who among us-
Yeah, uh, uh, one city council demanded to know how many people in the ZRC, and how many people on the planning board actually ran a home business or home office, to make sure there was no conflict, so, so we can talk, let's, okay, before we decide on the thirteenth of October, let's talk about home business. Carolyn, you wanna kind of summarize?
Yeah, I think the, um, the discussion really was involved around expanding the buy right allowances for home businesses based on the number of trips that would be generated to, to a person's home that were related just to that business. And, so allow more types, and actually not put so many restrictions on the types of home business, but really, what impact does it have to the neighborhood, meaning, how many cars are gonna be coming and going? And there was a lot of discussion about what number, you know, would that be, is it thirty vehicle round trips per week, is it five, is it five per, is it a daily number versus an average, weekly average? And I think, you know, between the two, I guess I would say there was definitely more public input to the home business, and certainly from staff perspective, people who've come, called and said, can I have this kind of home business, and many times the answer is no, just because it's classified as X, Y, or Z, not because it would necessarily generate any traffic, or sometimes it seems like a pretty straightforward thing, someone wants to do, you know, teach music lessons in their home, and it's gonna be twice a week, they still need to come for a permit, and, so there's a lot of discussion about the, some of the home businesses, that they already exist, that people just haven't registered because they either didn't know, or mostly because they probably didn't know about the requirements, but they seem fairly benign, so why not get those, you know, above board and permitted and allowed? So it was really sort of taking the existing language and using that as a platform, and then amending that dramatically to be based more on trips.
So a lot of the things that are, I'm sorry, but a lot of things that are in here that are, if you look at, the first page of home business are, Elijah, you do a lot more things by right, where currently you have to do things by special permits, so technically, most home businesses in town require a special permit, and I don't know how many special permits you've ever seen on the planning board for a home business, I've never seen one.
Well, they go to the zoning board, I think.
Oh, they go to the zoning board, okay.
And are there a lot?
Um, well, I'm trying to think of the ones this year, we've probably had two or three already, and some of them, the other thing I should say is, over the years, the definition or the allowance has been incrementally adjusted, so originally, no medical practice and therapy practices were thrown into the medical category, until we adjusted that a few years ago to allow massage therapy, psychotherapy not to be sort of classified as medical, and the big issue was, you know, if you're a medical practitioner, in order to meet your needs, you typically need to see lots of patients throughout an hour, whereas other therapies are much more drawn out, maybe once per hour, forty-five minutes, or what have you, so the zoning board has granted a lot of psychotherapy practices, massage therapists, Reiki, all sorts of kinds of things in home, and we've done that, the zoning board's done that this year, there've been other things, like artists who wanna have open studio in their home have come to the zoning board, even if they only want two open studios per year, that still triggers a home business, so you think of all the artists in the community that, that could probably benefit from not having to necessarily rent out space to do a studio, if it's only during the holidays or what have you, so there's that whole classification of people who have come for permits, but maybe a whole bunch of others who don't, because it's just like having a party in their house, and they're doing it once a year, and technically that requires a ZDA special permit. But yeah, we probably get, I don't know, between five and ten a year.
What kind of criticism did you hear of it in the public forums?
As Carolyn said, a lot of it was on traffic, what determines traffic.
And parking.
And parking, a lot of it was on noise, smell, and sight, for example, one of the things, somebody said, well, what if the person is a, wants to cook and they use a lot of garlic? Am I gonna be smelling garlic in my next door? What if I live in a duplex and we share a common front door? Am I gonna be afraid to meet strangers in my foyer when they come to visit my neighbor in my duplex?
It's not a problem. It's not a home business, say, you know.
Well, that was a lot of the trouble. I can cook with garlic now as much as I want. I can invite people to my house, even if I'm in a duplex. A lot of it were things like that. A lot of it were outdoor storage. They don't want, and it says in here, you don't, you, you... Basically, our rule was, you shouldn't be able from the outside of the house to tell there's a business going on. You shouldn't see it, hear it, or smell. And that was, that was kind of the rule that we were trying to put. As people said, I could do a lot of things in my house that make noise, that do, on things that are unsightly in my front yard, or smell. So how do you make a difference? But a lot of it was traffic and hours of operation.
How about auto repairs in your garage?
As long as it's completely contained within the garage, and it says you can't see it, hear it, or smell it. But like a landscape company, where can they leave all their ladders and the molars and all their stuff strewn about the yard?
Just go in the air and park it in the street.
Go in the air and park it in the street.
That, the application we had for a dog kennel, was that a home business thing?
Well, you know, they could've gone either way. So in that, in that regard, that was a, we also have a kennel special permit. That came to you because it was for a kennel, not a home business. But that one, I remember, was on the fence. You could either go to the zoning board, but since we already have specifically a kennel special permit, it really was better suited for planning board special.
In terms of traffic, one of the things a lot of people were afraid of was, say, I ship a lot, FedEx comes to my house four times a day, or a big FedEx truck comes, you know, they can show you anything you do.
That's fair.
Somebody else said, well, I could have FedEx come five times a day now because I order a lot of things on Amazon.com. So how's that different? So a lot of it is, is, was trying to differentiate between what you could do as a private citizen and what you would be restricted from doing if you had actually got a business in there. So those are a lot of the kind of things we talked about.
So there's more public input on this, instead of chickens, but we'd be following the same path, we'd have a public forum, we'd get more input? Or do we have enough public input to move ahead?
Yeah, I think this is probably your judgment call. I think there was definitely more public outreach on this, and we could, you know, pitch this forward as, if you think this is a good recommendation for the zoning revisions committee, you could introduce it as an ordinance and then hold a public hearing on it. Or you could decide, doesn't matter, even if they did have, you know, public outreach, you wanna have a separate public discussion before introducing it.
And, and one of these, I mean, I know, you know, I've looked at this, Carolyn's looked at this the last eight months, so for us, it's fairly familiar. I'm not sure if you guys have had a chance to even, you know, I think, you might not have to make a decision tonight, but I think people should become familiar with what's in here, and maybe take a look at it, decide, does it seem, does it seem reasonable? What people were most concerned with, yes, were traffic, parking, and, you know, being able to detect it. There were also discussions about signs, you know, and we said, you can't have a light sign, it has to be one square foot sign, so you can't, people were worried that you could stick a big sign in your lawn. And no, a sign has to be attached to the building. It can't be lit. People were worried about, let's see what? Oh, that the residence has to be occupied, let's see, what is it, by, the people who are doing business there, it has to be their residence. So it's not like you could, you can take a house, rent it, and just go there to do work and then not live there. You actually have to work in the same place that you live.
But you have, you could have employees.
You can have employees.
That was the whole discussion, because now to have employees requires a special permit. But if you do it by trip generation, then you would anticipate that an employee would be one of those, yeah, two trips.
And one of the ideas of that was that, that by allowing employees in the area like, I don't know, on State Street, that the idea is possibly your employees will be able to walk. If you allow these types of home businesses, that possibly your employees will be able to walk, but they're not gonna have to. Or they can ride a bike, or they can get there by the P M, P M, you don't need to drive. So, you know, there were, there are definitely some issues, you know, if you've got seven trips a day, does that mean there could be seven cars parked in front of your house? So that was another neighbor's, you know, people's concern. But the motivation behind, a lot of the motivation was, especially, you know, in towns like Northampton, where, you know, people do tell it to you, or they do wanna start small businesses. You know, a lot of people said, oh, think of Google starting in the garage. You know, Apple started in the garage, you know. Are we somehow prohibiting people from starting small businesses because of this zoning we have right now? We're discouraging the kind of things that we want people to be able to do, to be able to start a small business in your house without undue regulation.
How does ours zoning compare, was there any comparison to their neighborhood?
I don't remember that, Carolyn.
Or like a similar population?
Compared to other?
No, but you know, I just realized, I'm not sure, I was, I thought I might've missed something, this, the ordinance that I sent you. Because after that forum, I don't know, maybe I need to read it more carefully, maybe you guys can tell me, there was that whole big discussion about enforcement. And how would you know if it was by right, how many employees were coming, how many trips were being generated? So I did do a version that I think we discussed, and I don't know if that's the one in front of you, where there was sort of this administrative review, do you remember that, Steve? About how to overcome the issue of enforcement and how many trips, you know, someone's, whose burden is it to prove that you're only doing seven trips a day versus twenty-five trips a day?
I remember the conversation. I don't remember the resolution, because how was that different than any enforcement issue? How is this different than, say, I don't know, Holmorg, not turning their lights off, or?
Well, because, because it's by right, I mean, Holmorg has a permit, it went through the public process. So if this is all by right, then how would you know, how would someone know whether their neighbor had, was following the rules and had been, and had been signed off on, that they could do this thing? So we did talk about having sort of a three, a three-layered system. One was sort of by right, where you don't have anybody coming. The other was an administrative, like a sign up of the building commissioner. If you are gonna have employees or have clients come to your house, then you need to prove, you need to document what your, what your trips are gonna be. And then the third layer was, if you are exceeding that many trips, then that's a special permit. So now that I'm thinking about it, I don't, I think that's probably not the one in front of you. So I'm gonna try to find that one.
I don't see it. I don't see it.
Because I did put together a draft that included that, and that was to try to address, I think, what came up with the public comment of people not wanting to have the burden of ratting out their neighbors.
Yeah, it's, I, I can't remember it specifically. Yeah, we talked about, yeah, this was, maybe a year ago we started. Well, so I guess, we're gonna have to look at the updated version of it. This one, while it may not have as many open issues as chicken, the issue, well, the issues, if I had, if I had boiled down what I thought the issues were, the issues mostly resolved or revolved around traffic, either parking, trips, or hours of operation, so that you don't have traffic at two in the morning. And I think we did, this one does show hours of operation, if you're outside, if it rains, seven thirty to eight P M. You do need a special permit, because people were worried about, you know, they don't mind traffic at noon, but they do mind it at midnight. So at least that and the, as Carolyn mentioned, the enforcement issue. So that, to me, the issues were similar to what we have for a lot of permits, you know, traffic. But chickens, it's kind of a little more gray area than it was for home business.
Do you, do you think that there's been enough public discussion of this?
I mean, we had forums.
We don't need enough of a forum, but we could send it to the ordinance committee once we hear this administrative piece.
Well, we could, we could advertise it, because we haven't, we're not gonna vote on it tonight. So we could advertise it for the next meeting that we do take it up to vote on it, and have, have a public meeting where we invite people to talk about it.
I mean, could, but it will have a public meeting also in the ordinance committee takes it up.
Oh, yeah, we go to city council, they'll have a public meeting, we bounce back, they'll have a public meeting.
So how many public meetings do you think there is?
Well, we should probably have one before we send it on, so.
I mean, it seems to me that it sort of reflects positively how a lot of your infill and it's kind of, kind of growing with the sustainability plan, to have people able to walk places and work from your homes if they wanna... So to me, the idea of it is good. It's more of this many pretty stuff that we wanna get in place, so there's not a lot of protests. But I don't know how many meetings you actually need.
All right, I think we would do one before, if we go on it that night.
Frank, you're first. Oh, worked. I would propose we put this on the October 13th meeting as our one meeting, with the intent that we're gonna push it forward if we can get around it. My thing would be the enforcement. If you have, if your neighbor has one employee, and you're trying to enforce the trip generation, and you, you're, you don't wanna have to have the burden to snitch on your, your neighbor, you want somebody to just come in and say, you're over the limit, or if they have to sign the form. What if your neighbor's got six kids, and they're all over sixteen, and they're driving their friends back and forth all day, and it's ten times worse than if they just had one quiet employee? So I don't know how to even enforce that.
One kid's worse than...
Yeah, exactly. You're right. So that being said, I think there's been enough discussion, and the ZRC presentation, I thought was a good one. And it seems like we could have one meeting and get around that somehow, and vote on that. The chicken thing, to me, seems right now kind of arbitrary, the numbers, and I would, I would table that until we get over this.
What was the impetus for reforming the home business?
Oh, I think, all, going back to state of Northampton, is the idea that people are working more from their home, and that it could cut down on impact, you know, traffic generation for people who aren't necessarily driving to an office, or kind of work from their home, maybe, and see people from their home. I think there was a lot of, seemed to be a lot of support for changes in home.
I think, and if you look at the existing, this existing zoning, it's very restrictive about which you can do by right. So the other thing is, probably a lot of these home businesses that are going on, they're clearly out of compliance.
That's because you can't see them, you can't smell them. It's a very complicated ordinance, and they're trying to cross every T, every island thing, and it just seems like it's, it's a nightmare to interpret.
Well, they...
Yeah, I think, but I think the ZRC did it, I mean, they really delved into it. It was their, they felt like it was important to sustainability, to what they were hearing through forums, that people really wanted to be able to work more at home and have the option to see people. And then I just, just sort of, to go back to my earlier comment, the version you have does have the language, I just, for some reason, I spaced it, it's in item number four. But it says that anyone generating, you know, an average, and that should be twenty-five vehicle round trips, must first register with City of Northampton Building Commissioner, the nature of the business, hours of operation, and request of vehicle trips generated by the home business must be identified in that registration. And there was lots of back and forth discussions with Louis about whether that made sense and how he might handle it. So he was involved in the conversation too, about how you sort of, you can catalog what people are doing, it still needs to register, but it would be allowed. And that way, if someone is potentially in violation, you can go back and look at what they signed and said, this is what I'm gonna be doing. And then you have a mechanism to, to check.
But it does open it up to be much more by right.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So the CBAs aren't gonna happen, because of all this.
Right. And the whole, the idea was too, that people, it does prevent, present a barrier for people, small businesses or people who wanna practice out of their home, maybe they're trying to, particularly, I think it came up in this economic times, people have to scale back, they can't afford to pay for office space. And they, but then we have, you know, two to three hundred dollar filing fees, two to three months, permitting process, to get your special permit. So it puts a burden on people who may not have the resources, or are trying to, you know, scale back because they don't have resources.
Well, so Mark's point, also there?
Two things. One, I'm confused on the language. On four, it says any home business by right, if you have thirty vehicle round trips, you just need to register with the city. But then it says if you have twenty-five...
Yeah, I just, I noted that too, that we had gone back and forth between thirty and twenty-five, and that was the one place where twenty-five wasn't changed, so I had that changed.
Well, then, so say that first one reads twenty-five, so it says if you're there by right, you have twenty-five, you need to register. And then it says if you have twenty-five, you need a special permit. So isn't some of that redundant, or can you, some of that should be condensed? If they're both?
In excess. Excessively, we have.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, has, have, have, did people come up with examples of home businesses that they wanted to repair? I mean, I think of somebody doing computer repairs, that is mostly, goes on road trips to do it. And he's at home, and you might build computers or work on them there, but he doesn't have an employee, or a real estate agent, or, but now it looks like you're gonna have small manufacturing things that people fix their car and everything.
Well, one of the, one of, there were two things, I would say. One is, there was a concern to sort of broaden it, because the current language is really, seems to target more white collar jobs. And so there are people who currently run contracting businesses or landscaping businesses out of their home, they might have storage, they might have employees come to meet and then go somewhere, or they might do work in their garage for, so it's, it's meant to sort of broaden, so we're not sort of trying to, not on purpose, but by default, cater into one sector or another. The other thing, one example that came up from the ZRC was, well, you could pick anyone, if the dot com wonders started in their house and had a bunch of kids, you know, working around a computer, and why can't we allow that? You know, people who are...
Everybody saw the social network.
Right.
Old Tech Cavalry, who's...
And Steve, the next Steve Jobs, and, you know, all those people started in there.
Tech Cavalry started in Northampton, and now they have quite a few businesses. They started in the garage.
So there's that kind of, I think that was coming, some people's frame of reference too, was to allow, you know, foster that kind of startup.
I think it's a great idea, and I just think we, you know, we could move it ahead.
Or just like a chicken factory.
So the, Mark, you're suggesting you do it October 13th and then close public chicken thing?
I think for the city, I think this goes more toward what we've been looking at in a global sense of trying to promote this type of thing. I don't know, that we're trying to promote more chickens over promote more home business. So I would, I would say I'd vote for that for the 13th. I'd also say maybe between now and 13th, we look at ordinances at neighboring towns or cities just to see, is that, is that a matter of course that we do that, we come up with language for whatever ordinance we're proposing, and check around just to see what other people do, or are we in our own little cocoon most of the time?
Well, I agree that we should put the chickens on the back burner.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we do, why don't we do the 13th, we can have a public discussion about this? And then we could also, on the 13th, though, have a continuation of our discussion about chickens, without necessarily having to take them to be voted on. We look at the different ordinances that people have put on. We could put it on the agenda so people could know about it. But we'll do some more fleshing out of the 13th of the chickens.
I think if we put it on the agenda, people might come, might turn. But I, I don't think we want, I mean, I think we need to prepare for a lot of feedback on the home office. I think putting them together is, will make for a very long day.
Well, I'm saying, what I, I guess what I'm saying with the chicken thing is, if there is a, a home office, we would put on with the expectation that we voted up or down, either up to go to the city council or down. And chicken would just be a discussion, how, one more discussion before we're ready to have any kind of vote. We wouldn't have a voting on it. It would just be, let's look at other options that are, more of an information discussion than a vote, so.
Right, but I think if you, you'll advertise it. Although I guess this was, this was advertised tonight.
You know what, what I guess we would do is, we would put, we would not have, we could, we would, you know, I could limit it to an hour, no more than an hour on the chickens. We'll hear what people, we'll talk about it, if you know what people have to say, and then boom.
Well, but if it's on your agenda, it doesn't mean you have to go and broadcast saying you want people to come to talk about it. Because if your focus is going to be home business, that's what you really want people to come and talk about. So you might, I mean, it might be sort of, if we have time, we'll get to the chickens and figure out when the outreach meeting would be for that, as opposed to trying to invite for both.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, if it's on the agenda, people are going to come, you know, if they see it, they're going to come. But I think we could have a discussion over the matter of which, with the expectation that there's going to be future ones. You know, when we, whenever we had a ZRC discussion, one of the things I or whoever opened the thing up told people is that any discussion we have with the ZRC is step one of probably a ten-step process. So the ZRC was going to go to the planning board, was going to the city council, which was going to come back to the planning board. So even the, what, the idea was to make sure people didn't think that was the one and only opportunity they had to contribute to the process. And I would say the same thing that night, that this is a discussion, we haven't even voted on it, and there's going to be more chances. So.
Actually, this is step two.
Right, this is step two. Don't feel that this has been the only option. There's going to be more opportunities.
Well, I, I really think before we get to the suggesting this thing to go through, that we should try and attempt to hear from people that don't want to live next to twelve chickens. I mean, it, it would have a real impact on the, you know, I think we ought to at least give people.
Give them a chance to.
A chance to, that's better.
Yeah, give them a chance.
But also make them aware that what we happen, it's the same path.
But to answer your question about other communities, I mean, we don't necessarily go to the surrounding communities. We try to go to, you know, broader than that.
Yeah.
What, what other towns in Massachusetts, around the country, whatever, for any of the ordinances that we look at.
Just so, I mean, if we get so focused on the number.
And in fact, the chicken people have looked at sort of what other cities are doing in Portland.
Well, that's what I was thinking of, because if you're so focused and you come up with twelve chickens and you don't realize that nationally, eight is the, is the number of chickens you should be, you know, following and what are you doing and, you know.
It's really all over the farm.
Yeah.
You get a half a pack of chickens.
Yeah.
And look at New York and Portland, Oregon, see what they do.
Well, I think the home business thing is, is just, I agree with Mark, much more significant impact. I think that's where it should, it should be first of all.
Well, yeah, okay. So let's put that on and that we could put out and hopefully we could, we can vote it up or down on the thirteenth. But we can also just put an hour down for the discussion to change.
Although the way you guys worded it, it may actually have less of an impact because it seems like it's excluding a lot of chicken.
You would need at least.
Close quarter.
Right, so you would need four, you have to be four foot in from the setback and you need twenty feet from there, at least to the next structure. So, you know, houses, yeah, it's four feet in.
Yeah, but it's twenty foot. But not twenty foot from the lot line.
No, twenty foot from the coop.
Right, that would probably exclude chickens from downtown, right?
I would think.
Almost exclusively.
Right, yeah, right.
Unless you had a coop inside your condo.
True.
Your roof.
You could put it on the roof.
You could put it on the roof.
Chickens can't fly.
But they don't think fall.
Right.
No, if we have a green roof like the bakery on stage.
Chickens can fly.
Then right on the roof.
Yeah.
What is that hypothetically?
Quick question, just on the, on the home business. What if you're like, right now, if you're Bob's Computer Repair, like Randy was saying, and you make a ton of service calls a day, and you don't, you have a little sign that's one foot square by your door that says Bob's Computer Repair, but you have this giant van that's always parked in your driveway that says Bob's Computer Repair. Would that violate the signage, what the trip generation, or the, or is it, is it truck?
Signs on trucks are free. You're allowed to have, I think, one business vehicle parked, I think. I can't remember if it was one or two, inter-residential.
No, that's.
No, the plumber at my rent does that.
What's that?
The plumber at my rent does that. Oh, I think, oh, every plumber, you see them.
Right.
Call calls.
Yeah, I can remember the last day.
Or state.
But I'm saying if they use that as their, or if the van never, because that's their sign, really.
Because we can't just call back because it's a registered vehicle. It's not a sign.
What you're worried about, so if he, if he comes back more than seven times a day, is that.
Because he's service oriented, so he's always, maybe he's just one guy, but he's always in and out, in and out.
But that would fit with trips. I mean, trips include the, the business owner as well as the client.
Right, so it might actually crimp current existing by right.
That's what I'm saying, right? It could be go the other way.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good question. What if you're a plumber and you're going to call at two in the morning and you're going to jump in your truck? But we say you can't do a trip except between seven and eight.
Four trips for that week.
Well, doesn't that say you can't have people come to your house in that time, as opposed to making hours of operations?
If you're a plumber, how, how do you do that?
Yeah, I'll fix your sink trap if you bring it in.
Just bring it in.
And hours of operation between, and actually, that's, that's an interesting point.
Your sewer lines backed up, I'll see you in the morning.
Yeah.
Hang on. Seven o'clock.
Yeah, that's an interesting question.
So you're not really operating at your house and people are just getting your car to leave.
Right, but you're a trip. You know, the fact that you're leaving and coming back in opposed to somebody coming there at two in the morning.
Cancel cell phones or some other things.
That's a good point.
That's not, that's not over imagination.
Well, that's something, I'm wondering if we're too deep into it and if there's a national, a more recognized ordinance that you feel.
Well, but, but here's the other thing. The other thing is though, if you intend to do trips after eight, eight P M., the only thing you're going to have to do is come just to get a special permit, which you'd have to do today anyway to do any of this stuff.
Not if you're a plumber that are just working at your house.
Oh, you wouldn't, it's by right?
Well, actually, that's a good point. But just because you come home with a truck doesn't mean you have a small business in your house, a home business. And that's your fear. So, so the fact that you're a plumber who has a truck and you're in and out of there ten times a day, your, your, your house is not your place of business. You just have to do.
But it could be, but it doesn't matter because as long as you're not seeing clients or you have employees at your house, then we don't count, it's okay, you can do that.
You're not, you're not in business.
So that's kind of interesting.
Yeah, if you're running your, if your business name and.
As disruptive, right?
Oh, yeah.
If your, if your business address is your home, you can do that by right without it, as long as you don't have other plumbers coming to meet you at your.
So it's the employee, the employee issue and the client that's coming to see you issue.
Is currently what the ordinance reads. So you could in that situation, if you're, you ran your plumbing business out of your house, you're by right right now. You don't have to worry. You can go back and forth however many times you want, middle of the night, whenever.
So Bob's Computer Repair, he doesn't see anybody, but he makes twenty trips a day and brings back a computer with him every time. That's okay. And will it still be okay?
Well, not, I mean, I don't know. I think it's a good point, because Mark, because it talks about trips and hours of operation.
Oh, yeah, here it is. The trips generated by the home business from clients, employees, residential scale delivery. So the fact that.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so the owner doesn't count.
Right, was your client demand on this category? Right, so it's not by other people coming to your house?
Right.
Yeah, so, right. I haven't looked at this for a while, so the nuance, but it's important. I think that's going to come up.
Well, no, but that, this is what we spend all, you know, it's like King Street. We spend most of our time on one thing of King Street, which is that buffer, as I were, of all the stuff on King Street and of all the things that's home business, we spend most of our time talking about traffic, trips, enforcement and measurement.
That makes sense.
And then Nelson Iger just seems that old fucker.
Nelson Iger, like a home business. All right, so the thirteenth, we got both of them.
Oh, both, okay.
Yeah, we're going to.
One formally, one.
One formally, hopefully you can vote on, and one just an informal discussion.
Any other priorities for you guys?
Well, the other thing you have on here is other OPD items, cluster map changes. And this is kind of interesting, Wayne in New Zealand, because whenever it says other OPD things, you could be here for hours. So this is a test, Carol.
Um, there's a satellite dish I'm going to wheel in.
Just a few things from New Zealand.
So let's see, it's probably midnight, one o'clock there.
Yeah, you're right.
Tomorrow.
No, actually.
It's actually like a good time.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
That's in fourteen hours.
I think, yeah, we figured it's like sixteen or something. So, um, so no, so the other items are on that list, you know, that chart, or there's a couple of other things that have come up. So there's this issue with, we talked a little bit about institutional changes, but at a staff level, we've talked about expanding the business district in, I don't know where the Florence Grammar School is. It's right next to, or right across the street from the Florence Mini Mall, which is zoned right now, neighborhood business. And then it also backs up to Non-Attuck Street where it's zoned special industrial. But the Florence Grammar School is currently being leased out. Originally, it was granted a permit to lease to nonprofits, so they're small businesses. But that's evolved over time. So the question has come, arisen, does it make sense to just zone the school, bring it into either business zone or special industrial, because it really abuts those districts already. And it's become an issue for the school because the school is probably needs to, we need to do something with that building. It can't just sit vacant. And we've got leases in there and they're businesses, they're sort of more startup businesses.
That's where the castle at, Tina, is it?
Uh, I don't know, actually.
Is the first sale, is the building, the school apartment, is all the building?
No, we still want to maintain the building, but we don't, we'd like it occupied. It's a, obviously it's a financial generator, monetary generator and, and, you know, it's provided so far sort of low rent space for startup or nonprofits that couldn't afford to be in a, you know, class, a higher class office space.
We have a Bell, for radio, Commonwealth Opera, Harcourt.
And the Friends, the Friends service.
I didn't mean, I was going to write that. So at, at any rate, that issue has come up. And so, you know, one of the things we've talked about internally, I think with the board too, is whether or not it was sort of on that list going way back about looking at all the zoning districts. Does neighborhood business make sense anymore? Does it make sense in that location? Should it be general business? Or should we create a, you know, Florence business zone that's not quite like central business, but it has a little bit more general business type characteristics? And, and the reason why I suggest neighborhood business may not be effective there or in other places is it's very limiting on one, on the one hand, because it doesn't allow certain types of uses, like certain restaurant uses unless you get a special permit. Like that sandwich shop that came in for a special permit there a few months back. So, and given that location, is it really, you know, the intent, what, what's the intent of neighborhood business? And, and so there's that whole conversation about whether it should be zoned. Maybe look at rezoning the Florence Mini Mall and then wrap it in the school or just take the school and as an incremental step to rezoning. So that's one issue. And then there's the cluster and then there's that whole chart thing.
Cluster.
Cluster residential that you worked on with Joel a little bit.
Oh, oh, oh. Who was third one? Is it cluster, let me see what I'm over.
Uh, cluster, the residential Florence, and then that whole table that I sent you has all those things that we've been thinking about for, yeah, for ever since the same time.
This is graphic.
Well, I was just wondering how close the school is to the other building, you know, where's this, on Pine Street, that.
Oh, it's, it's that, is that the same district? No, that's, um, uh, gen, um, general industrial.
So, um, it would, yeah.
Might be special industrial, but.
I think it's special. But didn't we just change, where we changed the old, where we changed one of the buildings to SI?
From general to SI, or that's what I was proposing. Did that happen?
I think it happened a while ago. Didn't we, remember we, that building got sold?
Yeah, because it wasn't SI, I thought you.
Well, that's, that's per particular to the Arizona district.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think we changed it to SI.
They wouldn't all fit in sort of a larger zone, yeah.
Well, no, because those bigger buildings, we kind, we want to maintain in industrial use. And then you've got sort of the more retail oriented use of the mini mall area. And then school is then right next to the residential neighborhood.
Well, so do you guys have a recommendation or do you need to do some discussing with the school apartment or specific?
Well, we've had, we've had discussion. I think ultimately, a general business classification would be beneficial, probably more beneficial than special industrial or neighborhood. But then that would require probably the Florence Center to, Mini Mall to be rezoned from neighborhood business up to general business, which is a huge leap. I think from a context, it makes sense, but we need to have a broader discussion about it. That's probably better than rezoning the school to special industrial.
But the city buildings were exempt. Like you can do anything that building because the state owns it.
No, it's the use. Schools are exempt for use, but if businesses are using it, it's not exempt.
Even if it's owned by, even if it's owned by the city.
Doesn't matter if.
When you guys put the bridge over Main Street, you know, Wayne, I talked to Wayne about, we didn't have to approve, because the city put the bridge, the bike path bridge.
Yeah, but that's infrastructure.
Does not, no.
It's not.
Tangent.
Well, no, I, I guess, sorry. I just thought, what does it matter? If the city owns a building, what does it matter if it's owned? If the city, the zoning is a private city building?
Way of order.
Really weird to, I like to make sure we keep that.
Should I just call that out?
Yeah.
We need to change it.
Or I could just.
Well, so do you want, is it something, do you guys feel, do you need to do outreach or, I mean, you feel you don't?
Yeah, there needs to be outreach, but what, I guess what I'm saying is there's, there's so many zoning changes. And then there's the whole residential issue. Do we want to start addressing the districts, A, B, and C?
Meaning the pockets of yours, A, that you're in your B kind of thing?
Or, or dimensional changes in.
Eliminator.
The ZRC, the ZRC base.
Yeah, all of that discussion, yeah.
Urban zone, period.
Because so far, we've only addressed sort of commercial issues. So, you know, at some point, we need to tackle residential and that's a bigger equation. But do you want to, do you want to put that as sort of your next big effort? Is that a priority for you guys?
Well, the other thing that Wayne, you would talk about was, you know, that what are we going to do about the changes based on our school and.
Right, but we've already gotten your authorization to.
Right, but when you guys plan to put it back with that?
In the fall.
Yeah, so how many things could we have going on at any one time?
Well, that's a good one.
So we're going to have to do it. It's not accepted.
I know, we're getting so ambitious all of a sudden.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, that's why, yeah, that's why I guess I'm worried about, because I think.
There's going to be a housing boom soon.
A housing boom? Tangent. Yeah, so, well, let's, let's, so chickens, home occupation, we have the rezoning based on the sales of the large lots, the schools.
I'd love.
I think that's, that's a big.
Well, we shouldn't shy away. If we're going to have to tackle chickens, then we should tackle the residential zone.
Yeah, you know what's funny? Because we've been talking about it for two years. So I was a little reluctant to apply for it.
Can't make an almond without breaking eggs.
Well, Cal, I mean, Charlie, there would also was, I got a million. There were also, we still have King Street. So the next meeting we have in September is King Street coming back to us from city council. No, because it's, we're going to have a joint, joint meeting with.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, uh, or King Street. So we're not quite done with that. Then we have one meeting in September, then the first meeting in October, we're going to do for chickens and home office.
We have two meetings.
Yeah, that's, that's meeting. We have one more meeting in September. Then, so we have, yeah, the first one is on King Street. The second one, I'm not sure what's on the agenda for the second one. The first meeting in October will be the two things we talked about. Plus, we're going to get back at some point to Glendale Road subdivision in September. Kensington State.
That is the second September meeting, right? Didn't you say that?
No, it's the first one.
The first.
Was it the first?
I think maybe this is a tangent, but between now and that first meeting, we should do a little filter for Kensington.
I think we do. I think we definitely, before the eighth of September, we have to do a filter and walk that area. I think that's, that's, that's definite. Yeah, we should wait till we get the plans. We'll get the plans at least a week ahead of time, Carol.
We'll have to say.
I think, well, we'll get, I think you guys have to get it a few weeks ahead.
Yeah, well, I, right, I, we do, I'm just concerned because I haven't heard anything yet about it.
Because if you remember, was, who, who was not here for Kensington, Glendale Road? Answer.
Oh, there.
Yeah, Cap, you were there?
Okay. The only meeting I missed was the last one.
So if you remember, the, the big controversy with the neighbors was there were two. So, if you remember, the, the big controversy with the neighbors was, there are two places to put the driveway, and then there was, on the far side of Route sixty-six side, was the positions of those lots. And the burn, there was a burn behind three of the lots to, to prevent the, to shut the water down, so. I think it's definitely gonna be worth it to take a walk out there, so it might be that, that week, sometime between the first and the eighth. Then maybe we should use the second meeting in September, assuming we don't have lots on the agenda, to kind of prioritize what we wanna do. Because the other thing, this table, this table is, is a whole bunch of other things that are options as well. So, I mean, we're still in this, this, this state where we're not getting many permits, and so we do have time if we, if we wanted to take on the residential.
Well, all these other zoning districts that we took on, we, we seem to take on in clumps, or you feed us special, you know, S I district, here's, here are our thoughts, and we wouldn't, we'd discuss it at a meeting if time allowed. And then we'd have a couple of questions from tables the next time, and then we'd look at, you know, different, different ones along the way, and then, you know, twelve months later, we'd come to consensus and we'd agree on it, which is true. Do, can we do the same thing with, with these residential zones, pick off, I don't know if there's an easier one or a harder one, or, or, in addition to Clark's School, or those buildings and so, so forth. Can we just, as time allows, based on what you think is the way we should look at them, or the low hanging fruit type thing, which you, you did us with the, the commercial zones, can't we just do that with the residential?
The thing about the dimensional changes that we're proposing for your A, B, and C is, they're gonna be controversial. We haven't really, we have ideas, I'm not sure, they've got, I've got to a point where they've been written up in language, but they're the kind of things that I think are gonna be, take a lot of education of the public on. Because even though what most of the ideas are, are changes zoning to reflect what's currently there, the perception is that it's a change zoning to make neighborhood more dense. And it's gonna be a lot of education to make sure people don't get the wrong idea. So that's, it'll be a lot of outreach and a lot of, we'll have a lot of people here who we're gonna have to explain a lot of stuff to. So it's, and it's a big thing, and it's a big change in the zoning, it will be a really big change in terms of, would allow for, so. I mean, I think that's, maybe we do wanna have that second meeting in September as our own little planning meeting, decide what our.
To prioritize.
And we can talk about those dimensions a little bit more, because the only time I think you guys have seen it was when the Z R C was here last month.
There wasn't a lot of time to really.
We, we didn't get into the details too much, but, um, it's, I was on the group that came up with it, and it's an interesting idea. But it is the kind of idea that's gonna take people a little time to get there.
That, I think it's just gonna take, whenever we start it, it's gonna take a long time to finish it, so I'm thinking just, if I permit, just start the process.
Well, I mean, what do people think about taking the second meeting in September then? To, we know where we got, the, the first meeting in October, we know we got chickens in housing, the second meeting in, in September, will Wayne be back?
Yeah, he's, he'll be back, saying actually a couple of weeks.
Oh, really? Uh, I mean, does that sound like to try to prioritize all these things that we have on the agenda, I mean, all these things we have?
Yeah, so you mean, so for the second week in September, look at the residential.
Look at all the things we have in the hopper, try to figure out which ones we wanna do residential.
I think it's probably help us prioritize this, I mean, because have we finished looking, we looked at King Street, but have we finished really at all, but sort of commercial, you know?
No, we haven't looked at anything in Florence or Con Street, right, there's the Con's Pleasant.
Are we ready to start residential?
Right, well, I guess it depends on whether you feel like you guys wanna do all commercial first, then do residential, or do a little, you know, work in commercial, then you can, you know.
In terms of consistency, you know, and creating something that makes sense city broad, citywide, wouldn't it be good to finish off one of those, Rob?
Well, it depends on what you mean as finishing off, because they're commercial districts all over the city, so, you know, we've had a lot of interest for years, even when we were doing the sustainability plan, for people wanting to convert existing key, you know, three thousand square foot homes that are a hundred years old into three units, but the zoning doesn't allow it. So there's been that pressure, that request from different places, so that's a residential change, and we keep putting people off, saying it's coming, it's coming.
Well, there's also, when we talked about the expansion of central business down Con Street.
Right.
You know, that was another, you know, and that's something we've been talking about for a long time as well.
Right.
So I think.
So you wanna use the se- second September meeting to sort of look at what's in the hopper, and then what maybe the next priorities are, is it residential, is it more, is it Con's and Pleasant? And maybe look at some of the details of the residential components?
We could, we could, yeah, I, I think we can look and start making, do an overview of the dimensional changes, so you guys get an idea, and one of these Caroline mentioned was, you know, this idea where if you converted two families to one family, you can't go back, go back to family again. It would solve that issue, you know, these dimensional changes will make it safely do that again. So there, there definitely is a benefit, but the way we, the way we view it is such a big change.
Right.
Did we evaluate, I wasn't here for the last meeting, did we evaluate the Z R C in terms of whether it's a good model for continuing to address some of these, these issues? Or like a continuation adapted Z R C, or is the planning board just gonna do it for now?
I know, we can put that in the discussion for the second meeting in September as well, but, no, we haven't had that conversation at all.
I mean, the Z R C focused in on some particular issues and accomplished a lot, but there's still so much more to do, and do we need another entity like that to pick up on some of these?
Just restart it with the same people, huh?
Z R C point two?
Point oh.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
Talked about that on the twenty-third.
I, I liked how, like, it seemed as a group eighteen months ago, we said the commercial districts, we, let's, yes, let's focus in on those, and then you fed us, okay, tonight, group, we're gonna talk about this and so on and that. And so if we say in, end of September, yes, let's just jump into residential, and then you can feed us which ones.
But what she was feeding us was stuff that had gotten processed, a lot got processed by the Z R C.
No, that, that was.
I thought, I thought King Street was a big Z R C.
King Street, but all the stuff we did.
They all started, we're talking about chickens while we were focusing.
Are those, have all those tables been approved by the City Council?
So Thursday, next Thursday, the eighteenth, Central Business is going forward, but Office Industrial, G I, that all, Water Stuck section, that's all adopted.
Blood, Forest, River.
Yeah.
That's all done?
Yeah.
That's good.
So next Thursday is Planned Village and Central Business, and then we have the rest of the King Street package. And actually, I just posted the final layout, I did some modifications to the layout, and have sort of a separate design packet for Highway Business, and I posted that on the front page of the O P D website, so it's there. It's gonna be introduced to council next week, and then it'll be referred out for the public hearing, so.
Is it ready to change to the council, would it be referred out?
Yeah.
So we have, so the, the agenda for the next meeting, joint planning, a joint meeting with Ordeons, Kensington Estates, if they come through. Anything else, or is it?
Oh, a cell tower?
I thought we had the.
At Smithville. No, this is a brand new cell tower.
Oh, that in addition to.
At the Smithville Forest by the V A, we have a, a lease agreement, city land, so if the tower, it needs a special permit for the planning board, the, this tower company has entered into a lease agreement with the city for a long term lease of the land.
Where by the V A, where?
It's way back in the woods, um.
You get it across the.
Where's your shelf?
Yeah, so there's a little road that goes up there.
Like a forestry.
Yeah, yeah, Smithville Forest.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of neat thing.
Part of it is just, I mean, you'll hear this next time, but the, there used to be one, a pad, a cell pad on a V A water tank, and the V, and the tank's coming down, so, hence the cell pad is coming down, so they need.
The big blue tank on the top of the hill is coming down?
What? Are we ever gonna be here, so we're not gonna have anything to do with things about the V A, if they do that development up there, that's outside our jurisdiction, isn't it?
It's in your jurisdiction.
It is, that's what I thought, it was on federal land.
It's a, it's not the land, again, well, traditionally, it doesn't matter if it's on federal land, it's being run by a nonprofit, so it's not owned by the federal government, the, the housing itself, so therefore it requires permits. I was told by the consultant who's working to build this for the nonprofit, that federal, special federal legislation went through for this type of housing, that says that, you know, if you get any negative feedback from local governments, you can override that. I haven't seen the legislation, but that's what I've been told, so.
Is that the Soldier On, is that the nonprofit?
I think Soldier On is gonna take it, but there's another nonprofit entity that's done this elsewhere, that may be partnering with Soldier On. I forget how it's all broken down, but yeah, it's basically gonna be run by Soldier On. But, um, so I, you know, that's gonna be coming forward too as a permit sometime, because they wanna get those housing units in there.
Uh, all right, so the twenty, twenty-third of September, we'll have a primary meeting, try to figure out what we're gonna do. Any other things, anybody got any? I really like this new idea, tangent.
I know, that's a good, yeah, can we make a motion to?
Can we add that to our.
It should just like, it should just look like this, so it's discreet.
Or everybody, everybody just get a big letter T or red.
Or we just hold it up.
We gotta assign somebody, every, yeah, every week, somebody's the tangent.
Yeah, right, and it should be used with some discretion.
Oh, of course. Well, there are also ways. We used to, it was very rarely used, used in the City Council, very rarely used in school, it was in school, it is a Robert's Rule of Thingies, where you can say, call, call the question.
Oh.
So if somebody says, I call the question, if I recognize Jen, she says, I call the question, debate's over.
It's right.
And you have to vote.
Right.
So it's a, it's a, it's a, 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 a hard tangent.
It's a very hard, yeah, it's a little aggressive.
It is, very rarely used, but sometimes at like eleven o'clock.
Right.
Call the question? I hope we hear it.
I said.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right.